Good evening. My name is Robyn Muir. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, I want to welcome you to the Central Kitsap School Board Districts 2, 3, and 4 Virtual Forum. Tonight's forum is being recorded by the League of Women Voters and will be available for viewing on the League's website as well as on BCAT's Bremerton Kitsap Access Televisions Cable Broadcast. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit organization that neither supports nor opposes political parties or candidates. The League does not, does take positions on matters of public policy and advocates for those positions after careful study. Formed in the 1920s as an outgrowth of the women's suffrage movement, the League's purpose was and is to this day to educate and inform citizens so that they may more fully participate in our democracy. As a membership organization, we depend on our members to organize and run events such as this. We invite and encourage everyone to become members and help us work on the League's basic mission, which is that our form of government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. We would like to acknowledge that our homes and gathering places in present-day Kitsap County are within the ancestral territories of the Suquamish and Skalum peoples who have lived in harmony with the lands and waterways along the Washington Central Coast Sea, Central Salish Sea, I'm sorry, for thousands of years. Here, the Suquamish and the Skalum live and protect the land and waters of their ancestors for future generations as promised by the Point Elliott Treaty of 1855 and by the Point No Point Treaty of 1855. Joining us this evening are the candidates for the school board positions 2, 3, and 4, or districts 2, 3, and 4. For District 2, we have Breezy Mitchell and Kristen Hay. For District 3, Drayton Jackson and Jim Gross. And running in District 4 are Megan Heine and Jason Gillum. The rules for this evening's forum are as follows. I will ask questions that have been submitted in advance by the public. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to make a closing statement. Please keep an eye on the digital timer. If time expires before you finish speaking, please finish your sentence and yield the floor. Each of you has our thanks and our appreciation for stepping up and running for elected office. Please be respectful of each other, refrain from personal attacks, and address your remarks to the moderator or to the audience. So, we're gonna go in the order that you all appear in the voter guide to start with, and then I will rotate who goes first after that. The first question is, what inspired you to run for the school board and what qualifications and experiences do you bring to this role? First will be Breezy Mitchell.
Hi. So my name is Breezy Mitchell, and I'm running for the school board because I have three children in the district. So I have a sophomore, I have an eighth grader and a third grader. I regularly volunteer at the school, so I get to see all the amazing work that goes on in the schools, and then I also get to see the areas that need support. In my background professionally, I was a registered nurse, and I worked in the intensive care unit as a charge nurse, so I oversaw that unit for 12 hours and had to make some really tough decisions at times. And currently, right now, I'm a business owner. I own Mitchell Lumber in Belfair with my husband, and so we have about 30 employees. And going through the pandemic honestly taught us a lot in how to manage a business and get through trials, and so I feel like I can bring a lot to the board with those experiences.
Thank you. Kristen Hay.
Hi, thank you for having me. So I actually had ran for the appointment for this position back in March when the previous board director had to step down. And one of the reasons why I had ran for that was because I had heard from a lot of community members about some concerns that were going on in the school district that raised some concerns for me as well. And wanting to be as informed as I possibly could, I decided to step up and run for the appointment. And thankfully, I was chosen, and so I've had about six months now where I have been able to be on the board, and I've learned a lot, and hopefully I have provided some, you know, some insights and whatnot as well, and hopefully inspiring some changes. I also, in my current job, I deal with regulations both state and federally every single day. It's the full part of my job that I have to do, and so that just helps me really be able to look at the rules and regulations that apply to the school and how they can apply to our school district.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson.
Okay, thank you. I have two sons in the school district right now, and have been in the school district for many years now. My sons are in middle school and in elementary. And then I sat on in 2018, I sat on the Finance Committee to understand how the finances in the district were done. This is way before the pandemic. When I got, when I ran in 2019, I ran because there was issues in the school district, issues that are still relevant to this day. And being in the school district since 2019, I've held the helm of being voted as the president of the school board, and then leading in leadership when we lost school board members and seeing a transition to it. So when I sit in this seat, I sit in this seat with leadership skills to make sure that our school district stays on course, and that's what we have done, even through the pandemic, supporting financial decisions that have led to our school district being very sound financially, and then also to things that we had to do policy-wise. So as I sit in the school district as the new board member, I'm ready to serve again.
Thank you. Jim Gross, please.
Thank you. So lifelong Kitsap County kid, born here, went through almost all of my schooling in Central Kitsap School District. My wife graduated Central Kitsap and as well as all four of our children did. So inspiring, my inspiration is just to continue to serve the community, provide folks an option here. Drayton, appreciate you and the things that you've done, but wanted to give folks, you know, I think Drayton and I both want the best for our school district and our students, but you know, we have some different viewpoints on how to get there. So I just wanted to, you know, put my hat in the ring and see what people, how folks, give them an option on how they want to proceed forward with the school district. My qualifications are, I've been 36 years at the shipyard, started in a pipe fitter apprenticeship, and the last 20-plus years I've been in project personnel management. And I've been, I've served as the committee chair for the, for the apprenticeship at the shipyard for all apprenticeships. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Heine.
I believe in the mission of our public schools and to ensure that every child has the opportunity to discover their potential and learn the skills that they need for a successful future. I applied also to fill a vacancy to build confidence in our schools and in our students as we all work together to overcome pandemic setbacks. In the year and a half that I have spent as the District 4 Director for Central Kitsap, I have learned what it takes to actually run a school district. I put students first in all of my budget decisions. I fight for our students in Olympia and DC to get necessary funding for military families, special education, and transportation. Best of all, I have the pleasure of showing up for our students by volunteering for our Readers or Leaders program, by attending student presentations, plays, recitals, sporting events, and graduations. Student successes are my motivation and the greatest thrill of serving as a board director. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Gillum.
So I opted to run when I first heard that the position was available and that there was a lot of strife in most school board meetings and amongst the parents and consensites of the school board. My wife and daughter pointed out to me that I have a lot of experience in calling people down and helping opposing sides come to common ground and get the focus back where it belongs, and in this case, where it belongs is on students. Parents, political views, and people on the far left and far right, they aren't benefiting our students and their views from our sides. Focus needs to be on the students, and I hope that if I get elected, that I'll be able to help bring those, treat them to common ground and find logical solutions that benefit our students and help our students grow. I've been in Kitsap County for 25 years. My wife and I have eight children between us that want their central Kitsap schools, and I have a couple grandchildren in the schools now.
Thank you. Next question. What do you see as the main roles and responsibilities of school board members? Kristen Hay, you will go first this time.
So I think one of the main roles that we have is representing our community. They're voting for us to put us in this position, and so we need to make sure that we are thinking about the community and their needs when we're making our decisions. Ultimately, the responsibility on us, though, falls on educating our students and ensuring that they have a school system that is going to support them in all aspects of their education, whether they need additional help through special education or through arts and music and athletics. And so being able to really think about the students and what they need to be successful academically is, is our ultimate, that's our ultimate responsibility. We also have other responsibilities like policies and holding forums so that the community can know what's going on and understand what's going on and voting in committees and that kind of a thing. But I see the main goal is the academic achievement of our students.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson.
Well, thank you for the question. The main thing for school board directors is to create a safe and secure and belonging environment for our students, staff, our teachers, and then with that environment, able to lead the district in making sure that we have outcomes for our students for the future that they have in the careers that they are going for. And whatever that may be, whether that's trade, whether that's going for degrees, whether that's, you know, following a path of four-year education, master degrees, but creating that. And as a board member, we have that power to work with our administrators and work with our superintendents to make sure that they're living up to what we have set forth as a school district. We did that by creating our, our core values. We did that by creating our strategic goals. And moving forward, that was the one thing that we said is that we needed to make sure that we focused on that to move forward.
Thank you. Jim Gross.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, definitely setting policy and providing a pathway to assuring that we have that safe learning environment for our students, being responsible to the budget, and, and making sure that we have clean, healthy, and again, safe schools. Thank you.
Megan Heine.
The main responsibilities of a school board member is really setting the pathway for the school district as a whole. That includes hiring and evaluating the superintendent, the strategic plan, which Drayton mentioned. We finalized our strategic plan within this last year after ample engagement from the community. We monitor the annual budget. We review all of the curriculum that comes through the school district and engagement with the community, because ultimately, the community are our constituents, and we serve the community to ensure that our school district is the best that it can be.
Thank you. Jason Gillum.
So as a school member, our roles and responsibilities are to, in my opinion, are to help ensure the students have the best possible learning environment that they can have. Whether that means safety, whether that means the materials that are present that fit their educational needs, all these are, are affected by many things between the community, the environment, and with the laws and regulations that are passed nationally and at the state level that will affect what we can and can't do. We obviously have budget constraints and all that, and the school board, it's our, our job to help balance those and help advocate for the students for the best possible learning environment to make them feel safe, comfortable, and able to learn as, as we possibly can.
Thank you. Breezy Mitchell.
I believe that school board members serve the community as representatives, and then they all work together as a board, and the board functions together to supervise and evaluate the superintendent, vote on policies and procedures, and then they gather information from the community to set the pathway, to set the vision, the mission, and the strategic planning, and then they monitor that throughout the years as well.
Thank you. Next question. What are the educational strengths of Central Kitsap School District, and what are the educational gaps or weaknesses? First to go on this one is Drayton Jackson.
I, I really would say that our CT classes, man, are amazing. When we talk about the connections we have with Boeing, connections we have with Alaskan Airlines, Horizon, when we talk about our sports medicine program, when we talk about having a 3D imaging machine that is setting our children up for the future of what medicine is and what is coming, that, that's where things are at. 3D imaging machines that we have in our school district have allowed and afforded our students to go ready already into the job market. We, a lot of the gaps fall is our equity and in our, in our racial issues that we have in our school. One of the things that I definitely have fought for is to make sure that we have representation, whether it's our indigenous people having somebody that looks like them, our Latino people having somebody that looks like them. We have to do the balance. So people, the data shows that more people that looked at themselves, students succeed. So that's where a lot of our gaps are, but we're succeeding in so many levels that we're preparing our students to go forward into the job market of the future.
Thank you. Jim Gross.
Thank you. I, I think that we're doing a lot of great things with, with STEM and the Skill Center. You know, I've had many opportunities to visit the Skill Center as a donor over the years, and just, I just love what our kids are able to do up there and work with their hands and those things. Appreciate the opportunities that our kids have go work with Boeing and, and that. Those are some of our strengths. Our weaknesses? Mathematics. Olympic High School's got 16% proficiency, and that is, that is appalling to me. We've got to go and, and improve that and really, you know, drive forward some better policies that can get our mathematics scores up across the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Heine.
Among many of our strengths are our pathways to success to ensure that our students are career or college ready. We have several different pathways to graduation, which allows our students that intend to go off to college to follow a pathway that sets them up for college, or they may be following a pathway that sets them up to work in the shipyard or join the military or go straight into a career. We have caring and compassionate staff who know our kids and love our kids while they are at school. We have a strong and lean administration team, and we are educating the whole student. Our weaknesses are not unique to Central Kitsap School District. We are recovering from the effects of the pandemic, and that recovery is shared nationwide, and our students are still working to recuperate.
Thank you. Jason Gillum.
I think our strengths are in our education. I looked up some statistics on this recently, and 88% of our students graduate, I think I've got that right, might be off by a little bit, 88% is our graduation rate, which is above the state average. Also, we do that with less funding than the state average for funding for the school district. So I think that as far as education with what we have, I think we're doing really well. I don't know what shortfalls we have in that area. The shortfalls I do see are obtaining the federal funding for all of the federal students that live on bases and stuff that aren't accounted for. And I know there's a few things that have been done to try to capture that, but I believe there are some shortcomings there and be able to find some more funding in that regard.
Thank you. Breezy Mitchell.
I think we have some really great strengths in our district. I like that we have different pathways to graduation and our graduation rates are high. I agree with Megan that what we're seeing with our test scores, the third grade reading being lower and the ninth grade passing rate being lower is a national problem, but we still need to work on that as well. I know my children really enjoy all the extracurricular activities and their enrichments that the CK School District offers in school and after school, but I do think that some of our shortcomings are, you know, the students of CK have been reporting racial aggressions and discrimination against the LGBTQ+ community. So as a district, I think we need to have some different, difficult conversations and find a solution. Our students deserve action and not just listening.
Thank you. Kristen Hay.
Yes, but I think one of our great strengths that we have is all of our different special education programs that we have. We have programs that help students that need a little bit of extra help, and we have programs for our highly capable students so that they can excel at their own, you know, rate and at their level. You know, we have some other, for some of our high school students where they can go to different campuses and get some education in the pathway that's going to lead them to whatever they're going to do when they are done with high school. I think one of the, the shortfalls we have, and it's not necessarily CK's fault, it's that some of those special education programs are just not fully funded. And so being able to get people in there to do that work has been difficult, also because there's just not enough teachers or enough specialists to come in and kind of fill those roles. And so being able to have individuals go out there and try to recruit and fill those is really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. What do you think is the major deficit in Central Kitsap, and how or what would you do to remedy the situation? First on this one is Jim Gross.
So I'm hearing from a lot of teachers and parents that we have a deficit of discipline in our schools. It seems all too often, from what I'm hearing, that, that students are allowed to be disruptive in their behavior and aren't, there's no accountability for that. I'm hearing that, that students in the junior high and high schools feel unsafe by going to the restrooms because of the activities that are going on in there. So I think discipline is, is a major deficit and, and setting some, 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 some solid guidelines for our students and then holding some accountability to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Heine.
I see the major deficient in CK as behavior intervention, which is really more about accountability. And I, I don't know that there is a one, you know, a one, one thing that would absolutely help that, but we do need to ensure that we have ample behavior interventionists in our schools. And there, there are a shortage of them in Washington because there is some legislation that requires certifications, and the universities have not gotten up, caught up to those certifications, and so getting those in the schools are very difficult. And then we also need accountability from the student and the family that sometimes their behaviors are not appropriate for our schools.
Thank you. Jason Gillum.
So I would agree. I've heard the same thing that Jim's referring to about discipline, discipline issues at the schools. I've heard that especially post-pandemic, a lot of students seem like have, it's forgotten how to behave at school. I'm not sure from a school board perspective what we can do for that other than to help, there's already a pretty robust plan in place for student responsibilities. We definitely need some more enforcement and maybe some more student engagement on that. Other things that we lack, I think, is maybe some mental health support for students. Mental health has become more and more of an issue in schools these days, and I, I don't know that the schools have kept up on meeting that need. And then obviously, as Kristen pointed out, special education, our district's having trouble keeping, maintaining special education teachers and instructors, and we need to find a way to be better at that.
Thank you. Breezy Mitchell.
I would agree. I think one of our major deficits right now is the behavioral loss, and I do believe it was from the pandemic, or maybe it stems from other traumas that these children are seeing. I think I was able to volunteer with a social emotional group, and just hearing what these kids are going through at home, it really gave, it just made me feel kind of sad for them, and you have to have empathy and compassion because I feel like these kids are acting out because their needs aren't being met somewhere. So I think as the school, we need to start treating the whole child, addressing mental health issues, giving them the tools for success so they can meet their academic, social, behavioral, and emotional needs.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson.
Yeah, I'm glad Breezy brought it up. The whole child, I think a lot of our families are going through so much, and that is relevant to the school district being the end all with making sure that our children are there. But when we talk about a deficit, it's support for funding for a lot of our special needs children. A lot of these behavior issues were there before COVID, but COVID had masturbated them. They've moved them forward. So we're talking about how do we get children back? There's children that had learning loss for two and three years that did not have traditional education. So our deficit now is how do we get them back on track? The scores that you see nationally is because that we went through something that was unheard of. We were not planned for it. So now our deficit is how do we get them back on point? What is needed? Mental health is needed, but then also financing and supporting special education, supporting those programs that allow for the school district to now do more and not overexaggerate our teachers to be the disciplinary and also mental health counselors. So we need more of that support and making sure that our teachers get that support in the classrooms.
Thank you. Next question. What specific goals?
I didn't answer that one.
Pardon me?
I didn't get to answer that one.
Oh, I am so sorry. Kristen, would you please answer this question?
So I was gonna say the whole discipline issue as well, but I'm not going to be broken record. So I'm going to move on to another issue, and I think that's just transparency within the school district. There's a lot of community members that feel that information that should be available to them is not available to them, or if it is available to them, it's in a format that they don't understand because they don't work in the school district. They're not in that every single day. And so I think that being able to find a way for the school district to efficiently and effectively communicate with the community members and get them the information that they not only want but deserve, I think that would be a huge improvement, especially when it comes time for like voting for levies and things like that. The community wants to know. They want to know where their money's going. They want to know where it was supposed to go, how much got spent in which little pocketbook. And, and so I think that if the school district can really come through some of those, I think that it would hugely improve their relationship with the community members.
Thank you. Next question. What specific goals do you have for improving student achievement, and how will you measure that success? Megan Heine is first for this one.
I would love to see our year-over-year cohort test scores climb incrementally every single year. Post-pandemic, our test scores are low, but they are low statewide. It's, again, it's not unique to Central Kitsap, but I am really looking forward to watching that cohort data year-over-year climb, our math scores, our ELA scores, and then our secondary science scores. And honestly, the way to achieve this is ensuring that we are reviewing and approving excellent curriculum. We, in the last year, we've approved a couple different sets of curriculum, and we have more curriculum coming down the pipeline in the next couple of years, and that is how we are going to work on those test scores, and we will again see those 80 and 90%.
Thank you. Jason Gillum.
I would like to see our students feel more, more safety and more comfortable with schools and learning environment. As far as how to measure that, the only way I can think of to measure that would be if there are some sort of surveys that involve that that are available to students or put out there to students. I don't really know if that's something that's feasible or not. I'd like to hear less about students feeling unsafe, less, hear less about students feeling bullied or intimidated at school. I'd like them to hear more about how they feel they have a good learning environment, how they're able to focus on their work. Anything that we can do to help that happen, I think, will improve other things, including test scores and learning rate, all that.
Thank you. Breezy Mitchell.
I would also like to see the test scores rise, but I feel like we are on the right Um, I would also like to see the test scores rise, but I feel like we are on the right path for that. Um, something I think would be a good goal to have is to get the feedback from the community, the students, the parents, the educators, the staff, to make sure that they feel like they're being seen and heard and that they're engaged as well. Um, I think that building a school community, it will increase our safety because I feel like all children need to feel safe and welcome in our schools. But also parents and caregivers should also feel safe sending their kids to school.
Thank you. Kristen Hay.
Yeah, so, um, I agree with Megan and I think that releasing that improvement in our, our test score so that we can truly see that our students are receiving the education that they deserve. And I, I feel like one of the best ways we can do that is, is through our, not just through our curriculum, but the resources available to our teachers and our staff members to be able to implement that curriculum in a way that they feel empowered to do that and that makes it successful for them. I know that, um, when, one of our science curriculums for our elementary schools is phenomenal. And there's a lot of, um, play between the science and, and English for their reading. And it's a beautiful program and it's very, um, uh, like bright and colorful and the students can choose from an array of topics that they are interested in. And just having, um, that available to them and to the teachers to be comfortable in teaching that, I think that would be really important.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson.
Yeah, I, I, I believe the test scores is definitely there, but, uh, I'm gonna stick to one of our strategic goals is all students, uh, achieving their full potential. And that comes by academic success and developing the whole child and understanding, meeting the, the children where they're at. And, you know, I go, I can go back to twenty twenty-two, we were up one point seven percent of our graduation rate. A lot of our students met our graduation rate and that came out of COVID. So the, the, the educational process is there. I think, like I said, we have to get back to how do we get our students back on track? And then, you know, achieving their full potential is what it is. What is, what are missing from our students that we need as a board to give our administrators and our teachers the tools to go ahead and move forward? Where is those gaps that we're missing that as a board, we can say, hey, let's move this out of the way. This is not working. Let's put that in because that's working. So we have done some good work in Central KISAP compared to surrounding school districts. And when you look at our numbers, we're moving forward and we're not going back. We just need to fill some gaps and figure out a way to get our children back on, on, uh, track.
Thank you. Uh, Jim Gross.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, agree, it's, it's, it's raising those, uh, those scores, um, that, that, that's really the indicator that we're doing the right things, right? Getting the right policy and getting the, the right, uh, uh, curriculum in place. Um, that, that we're providing a, a safe, uh, and learning environment for, for our children. Um, I think that, that the thing that you'll see there is both improved, uh, math, improved scores uh, and improved, uh, attendance. I think that's a good indicator of how safe that they feel. Um, I'm going to key back in on these, on those scores with math. Uh, to me, you know, math is, is really teaches you a lot about how to think. It's, uh, gives you, uh, deductive reasoning and those things. And, and it's just the spirit, uh, uh, to me that we're, you know, the best we're doing is I think thirty-eight percent of one of the high schools and, and as low as sixteen percent of, at one of the other high schools. Um, we really got to go figure out what that, that math, uh, uh, part of this is and, and, and work to improve those skills.
Thank you. Um, next question. In what ways do you plan to support teachers and staff to help students succeed? Jason Gillum.
So I have a, I've got a couple of friends who, uh, work as teachers in the school district, uh, and, uh, stepdad that works in the school district. And I've heard multiple times that there's some, uh, barrier to teachers talking to school board members, that they're not supposed to talk to the school board members because it's kind of like overstepping the chain of command, uh, the boss's box. If we can't get word from the teachers, the ones that are on the, on the floors with the students, experiencing the problems, if we can't get their input at the school board level, I think we're doing a very big disservice. I, I think the teachers have the insight for how to make their classrooms better, how to improve the learning environment and what students need. If the teachers can't communicate that to the school board, then we have, we have a big barrier to fixing any problem throughout. That needs to be fixed.
Thank you. Breezy Mitchell.
Um, educators and staff need to be supported and valued so they can do their job more effectively. Um, I feel like a lot, most, all of our educators, they're highly knowledgeable experts in their field and they need to be supported, um, by the board and the district so that they can succeed. I feel that investment, investing in the teachers is just in turn investing into the students. Um, I know at our company, we were seeing really high turnover and then we started really investing into our employees and it just brought the whole company up. So these teachers need to be supported and valued and they just need more support, I think, so they can do their jobs more effectively.
Thank you. Kristen Hay.
Um, yeah, so I think, did I answer this question already?
No, um, do you want me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
In what ways do you plan to support teachers and staff to help students succeed?
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Um, uh, it was such a short question. I think I missed it. Um, so, um, yeah, I think that, that the staff members, uh, teachers, they should all be supported, um, at all levels. I know, you know, I work for a huge corporation. I work for the federal government. And, um, there are times when I don't feel valued and it makes it really hard for me to do my job. And so it's important that all staff members feel valued and that they have ownership in what they do. Um, I think it's really important that, um, that our staff members have, whatever that support is, whether it's, um, you know, more group time as teachers to come up with solutions. If it's learning opportunities for them, like I said earlier with curriculum, maybe we have some new curriculum and they're not comfortable with it. Um, we should absolutely be supporting them. Um, and I know that, that as a board director, if I had a staff member come up to me and they wanted my assistance in something, I, I wouldn't tell them no. I've not heard, um, that they couldn't come and talk to us. Um, so just like all of the other community members, is that we're there to, to help and support.
You, Drayton Jackson.
Well, one of the things that we did, uh, in the Central KISAP School District was offer, uh, counseling to our, uh, teachers. We, we knew that they were burnt out. We knew that things were, were happening there. Uh, and I must, I must say just as simple, uh, as this, I go into the schools all the time and have conversations with teachers and hear from them. And hearing them and what, what they need allows us to have those better conversations as a school board. And when we hear from our, our teachers, sometimes it's just really saying thank you. We just did a great, uh, bargaining deal with our union and we're moving forward with the district that is strong and, and economically sound, uh, to our teachers. And I think it's one of the things of what else can we do? What more can we do? To make sure that we are not, uh, you know, administration, board and teachers and everybody differently. How do we work together as one school district? And that comes from listening. And that's what I think we've done as a board over the last couple of years. I've listened to what our teachers need so they, they can breathe. Just like our students, they are going through a lot of challenges as well.
Thank you. Jim Gross.
Thank you. Yeah, I really think it's important to, to recognize and, and reward our, our, our top performers, uh, both, you know, uh, the teachers, uh, the, the administrators. Um, I also think it's, uh, important to recognize, uh, our, our lowest performers and make sure that we, uh, uh, can help them take some corrective actions. Um, but I'll, 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 I'll again, uh, say that, uh, one of the, the things that I'm hearing is the, the biggest thing I can get go to, to help support teachers is to, uh, support them through the administration, uh, with discipline in the schools. Um, we, we've got to get, uh, the right behaviors back in place in the classroom to make a safe learning environment for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Megan.
The way we are supporting our students is through social emotional learning. Social emotional learning teaches skills, including communication skills, to help students learn how to communicate with their teachers. And we're teaching our students to be kind and caring members of our student through our SEL curriculum. Um, this is used to address the issues of bullying that we at the board level and at the administration level hear about from our students on a regular basis. And then our staff, we are supporting our staff by ensuring that they are receiving appropriate professional development that teaches according to their needs.
Thank you. All right, we've sort of, uh, been around this one, uh, several times here tonight, but I'm going to go ahead and ask it and see if we can get some specific proposals or ideas. Um, teachers report that behavioral issues are on the rise. What guidance and or policy would you propose to assist teachers in finding a balance between maintaining a safe learning environment and ensuring all students right to learn? Breezy Mitchell, you're first on this one.
Um, so I feel like the school districts, um, distant, discipline policies, they must be consistent with the, um, federal and state laws. But I do feel that what we're doing is maybe not working. So we need to rework this and work with the teachers and work with the administrators and see what we can do to maybe change the way that we're doing discipline or have more options. Because a lot of times when I do go into especially the elementary schools, and I hear it from the middle and the high schools as well, is that the kids who are listening and behaving, they are, they're having learning loss because of the disruptive behavior in schools. So I feel like we need to go back and figure out a different pathway.
Thank you. Kristen Hay.
Yeah, so we do have, uh, some policies around discipline. Um, and from what I have heard from community members and staff is we're not actually using it. And so I think one of the important things would maybe be to get back to what that policy says, reevaluate it, make sure that it functions in the way that it's supposed to, and then actually use it. Um, and I think that another important aspect would be involving parents. Um, you know, parents are there to help guide their children, come alongside them and put them on the right path. And so I think that involving parents when there are issues would be huge. Um, I know that, that there have been cases where some parents don't want to hear it or they think that their child's perfect. I think we all think our children are perfect, right? We hope they are. Um, but sometimes, you know, kids do things that they're not supposed to do and we need to be able to hold them accountable and have the parent support in that. And then I think that we also need to find some ways where maybe some of the disruptive students are still in a learning environment, but not in one where they are directly affecting students who want to be there and learn.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson.
Yeah, I, I think that we've let politics into the school and a lot of that has led to what you see. Uh, I'll go back to what I said before. A lot of our families are also going through it. But we have let politics dictate a lot of our children's actions in the school. When we started and we do in, in school suspension. And when we talk about doing in school suspension, a lot of those children do get a counselor. A lot of those children do get help from the principal or the administration. But then at the same time, there's issues that's going on at home that the school district just can't deal with. We have to do this as a community to figure out what are those other issues that's causing the discipline for our children. And I know for the fact, data is showing it that a lot of our families are struggling financially. A lot of our families are struggling to just stay in, in a, a rent, uh, affordable housing. So those things are leading to pressures in our students and we have to get to the core of that. And CK School District just can't be the end all of it and we have to deal with that in a way. But we do have policies in place that deal with discipline in our school district.
Thank you. Jim Gross.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so, uh, uh, again, maybe a little bit of a broken record here on, uh, uh, you know, we definitely need to change, uh, change these things up. Um, I, I, uh, I can just reflect back on what I know, uh, what I think it looked like, when I think it was right. And I'm going to go back a while here, right? Uh, but, but I, uh, thirty-eight years ago, Tony Apostol, the principal of, of Central KISAP High School, he walked the hallways in between every, every, all the classes. Uh, he, he went into the restrooms. He made sure, you know, if there was that, that smoking in the boys' room thing going on, he, he fixed it. Um, and I, I think that, that, that it comes down to our, our administrative staff, our principals getting out there and engaging with the, with the students and, and holding that accountability, uh, uh, is a big part of that. Um, and, and just, y- you know, I, I, I understand the, that, the talk of the social emotional learning, um, a- and, and that's probably part of this answer, but I don't think it's all of it. There's some more accountability that needs to happen here.
Thank you. Megan Heim.
We need legislative change. And since that will take time, we need to evaluate how we are addressing behaviors currently. We currently use a multi-tiered system of support, but we need to strengthen the level of supports at each stage that we offer. We need to recognize that behavior is a form of communication and the kids who are acting out are letting us know that they need more support. Um, and often that can mean more mental health support and working with our community providers to address the issues that underlie those specific behaviors.
Thank you. Jason Gillum.
So when I first, uh, became aware that the discipline was a big issue in the district, I started doing a little research and there's, I, I remember it's like a thirty-four page student rights responsibilities. The majority of that has to do with discipline and, uh, things like that as far as if they're not following the rights and responsibilities. I feel like that's not being used. It needs to be used. It's been a lot of, if it's thirty-four pages long and I read through it, there's a lot of detail, a lot of information there, a lot of work went into developing that. So it needs to be pulled back out, dusted off or whatever, looked at and, and used. It needs to be enforced. It needs to be addressed. Uh, along with that, the, the, like, like, uh, was already addressed, uh, mental health issues and, you know, discipline issues often send back to that. We need more, a little more support for that, right? Some more mental support. Because like, like Megan pointed out, students that are misbehaving often are trying out for some other attention. And then we need to be able to support that.
Thank you. Um, next question. What is your opinion of the arts as an integral, integral part of the curriculum? And what support would you offer for arts in schools across all grade levels? Kristen Hay, you are first on this.
Yeah, I think arts are hugely important for our students. There are some students that, you know, math is not their jam, right? And so they need the arts. That's what they're going to go into. They might become a music teacher one day or an art teacher, have an art studio. Um, all, all of those art programs are hugely important. Um, unfortunately, they're not really funded. Um, so a lot of the funding for those come from our local levies. And so in order to be able to support those programs, we need to make sure that we're being very clear to our community and where some of that levy money is going so that we can have the art programs and the music programs and some of those other extracurricular activities or even within the school time for those students to be able to, to do that. Um, because like I said, not all of them are math or science oriented. It might be more towards the arts and so we need to be able to support those students.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson.
I'll say this, if you haven't seen our performing arts center at CK, please go do and at, uh, Olympic High. Uh, I mean, we, we put, I mean, Willie Walker was put on last year and did phenomenal numbers. Over a hundred students and parents participated in, uh, uh, I'm top-notch Broadway play. And we, we understand that that is some of the things that help our children want to come to school and be a part of, uh, the educational process to know that, you know, I get to do this. I mean, our program, uh, at CK teaches our students to be ready to work on Broadway. Like that's, it's amazing. So when we, when we talk about what the arts is, you have a lot of other things that, that we're into too. We do gaming in Central KISAP School District, you know? So it's important to make sure that we're getting to what children want as well and what students desire in their heart on top of the educational part. And data already shows that when you give a child something else that they desire for, whether that's arts, clubs or whatever it is, they succeed more, their attendance go up more. And in the arts, that is the number one thing and we know what our levy helps to get that and move that, uh, needle in that department.
Thank you. Um, Jim Gross.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, definitely believe arts are, uh, important for our students. Um, uh, you know, I, I'll go back to my math comments. Um, you know, there's right answers, wrong answers, uh, in arts. Uh, it allows that self-expression and, uh, and really getting out there about, uh, you know, who, who am I? And, and, and what's that look like? Um, you know, definitely, uh, includes a lot of teamwork in there, uh, from the different arts. And, uh, now I'll go to one of my favorite art centers is, uh, what I call the Skills Center still. Uh, all the, uh, uh, the, the, the art, uh, up in the trades, uh, that we do out at Skills Center. I, I, I think that that's really solid for our, our, our district and, uh, I, I, I think that that's really solid for our, our district and uh, and continuing to support those programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Heim.
There is truth to the statement that art saves lives. There are students in our community that find their way out of a deep dark hole through the arts. And art can be the means to um, life-saving self-expression. Art also helps our students with their thinking skills, um, for our students that are less artistic. And our levy supports the arts. Uh, currently, all after-school extracurriculars are levy funded. And so uh, in order to support the arts and continue them in our school district. There is community engagement that is necessary. And that comes in the form of approving a levy to ensure that our arts can continue in our district.
Thank you. Jason Gillum.
Numerous studies have shown that uh, students who have access to the arts and stuff succeed more in school and in life. I think our schools need to, I think we do a pretty good job of uh, keeping the arts in the schools. A lot of schools have gotten rid of a lot of those programs in favor of science and technology, but, and although science and technology are immensely important. A crucial part of our future as a country. Without the arts, we're gonna lag in some other areas. Also, not every student is programmed in their uh, mind, their psyche to be science and technology majors. There are definitely, there's definitely a need for arts, there's definitely a need for vocational education. Uh, there's nothing wrong with the student wanting to do, you know, woodwork, auto shop, those things. And I know some of those programs of, and watered down quite a bit in favor of science and technology, and I think we need to make sure we continue funding those and make those available to students.
Thank you. Breezy Mitchell.
Um, I feel a little biased. I'm a big supporter of the arts. I have, um, my oldest is in the marching band and jazz band. And so I think what the Central Kids App does with the music program is just amazing. And they have some really, really great um, opportunities in the middle school as well with ceramics and pottery and cooking. And it just gives these kids an outlet, um, maybe the kids who aren't very sporty and it gives them something that they can really, you know, be a part of and be a part of the school culture that way. Um, I would love to see the community keep on funding these arts. I would also love to see more funds for the art elementary schools. Because I know right now we don't have fifth grade band anymore. Um, and that's something that really inspires the kids to get into band and stick with it. And then all of the art positions in the elementary art are volunteer as well. So I'd love to see more in the elementary schools.
Thank you. Next question. How should parental concerns be accommodated when it comes to removing books from the classroom or the school library? Drayton Jackson, you're first on this one.
Our process that we have uh, is a great process. We're one of the few school districts that you have to be a certain license to be a librarian in our school. Which when I axed around, a lot of people were like, wow, that's the extra yard. Um, I'm, I'm, the library saved my life. Uh, growing up in the projects, that was the one thing that I had is that I was able to escape uh, and, and read books, you know, so. It gave me culture. So to read somebody else's culture, to read something that may give me support, no matter whether I agreed with it or not. Uh, doesn't take for it. I wasn't a Harry Potter fan, right? But the books were there for those that liked it. So there's things that we have to learn to stand by to give culture to our students, no matter how people look at it. We've been here before with banning books, we've been here. And the key thing is this, it shuts off a lot of people in what they think is for them and what is for everybody else. So it may not be for you in one thing, but it is for everybody else. And people have shown that voice and have said what they wanted in our libraries.
Thank you. Jim Gross.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I think we need to listen to our parents and, and uh, understand what those concerns are. And, and assure that we have the uh, you know, the, the correct, uh, I'll say, uh, uh, representative items in our, in our libraries. You know, we, we, we won't all agree on what those books are and, and uh, Uh, but I, I think we would agree at some point on what the, what, what is it, what is incorrect for certain age levels to be reading. Um, you know, there's, there's many books that uh, that, that aren't in our libraries and, and for a good reason. Um, so we just gotta make sure that we're looking at what those are and, and taking that input from, from the community. And, and making sound decisions with uh, with what materials we want to have available to the students.
Thank you. Megan Heim.
We welcome parents to review the books that are in their children's libraries and ensure that they are appropriate for that age and grade level. Our parents do have rights and they are welcome to contact their teachers or their librarians with concerns for their individual students. And at, at a broader sense, we have a library materials review board. And there is a well-documented process to have a book reviewed. It's a one-page document and you list the book and what your concerns are after you have read it. And not a single person filled that form out last year. And so our, our process is there. Um, our librarians are very educated in um, the library and curating the books. Um, and so if a parent has concerns, they can approach their teacher or the librarian, or they can fill out the form to have a book reviewed.
Thank you. Jason Gillum.
I've stated before and I, I stand by it, I, I am not in favor of censoring and removing books from the library. Some, some things might not be appropriate for educating the masses, but if there's There's a marginalized group or something that needs access to certain reading materials or to find representation. Somebody that feels or believes the same way that they do, they should have that available. It should not be excluded. Just because some parents or some political group or political views think that they, that that shouldn't be taught or that it's uh, indoctrinating students for certain things or whatnot. The books were written to be inclusive. The uh, the, if we have them, the, like Megan said, they've been reviewed, we're not putting stuff out there that's gonna be harmful to our students. Um, and, and I'm happy to hear that there is a process for expressing those concerns formally and having them reviewed. I assumed there was something like that, but I was not directly aware of it.
Thank you. Breezy Mitchell.
Um, parents' concerns should definitely be heard and taken seriously. Um, like Megan said, there is a formal process to request library materials to be reviewed. Um, you can also contact your principal and have it be removed and then go to the review process. Um, I know that parents have the opportunity to review the curriculum as well. And I'm thankful that the school district has um, curriculum specialists and librarians who are experts in their fields. That they can create this diverse curriculum in libraries because it's so important that our kids have options. And that we're servicing all the children of the district.
Thank you. Kristen Hay.
Yeah, so I've heard a lot of chatter about books and whether they are appropriate for students um, from parents. And um, I don't think anybody's looking to ban books, you know, if you ban a book, it's not available on any platform. You can't go to your public community library, you can't go to Amazon or a bookstore to get the book. I don't think anybody's talking about banning books. I think really what parents are looking for is for the books to really be evaluated on what their educational purpose is. And if it is um, appropriate for the students at whatever grade level they're in. Whether they're in elementary school, middle school, or high school. And I think really looking at um, the complaints that parents are making, whether they've made any the last year or they're going to, you never know. Um, we really need to take those serious because the kids, there are, students are their children. And so while they're students within our school, um, they ultimately, they're not our kids. They have parents who want to ensure that when they go to school, they are being educated and the books are being exposed to are educational.
Thank you. Next question. How do you plan to keep the curriculum up to date and relevant to prepare students for the challenges of the future? Jim Gross is first.
Okay, well, I think we've got a curriculum review board, um, uh, taking uh, uh, the The concerns and the, and the, 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 the wise viewpoints of the uh, of the teaching, teachers and staff Uh, into account as we uh, uh, take a look at what that curriculum is and, and uh, Uh, likely, you know, looking for where it's been used and how it's working for those other school districts and, and those things as, as we move forward.
Thank you. Megan Heim.
Within our district, we have specific curriculum specialists in m- multi-discipline. Um, we also have curriculum approval boards, and those are comprised of uh, teachers, community members, parents. And they review a variety of curriculum. And so we keep our curriculum up to date and relevant at the suggestion of our specialists. They may identify that a curriculum is outdated or the curriculum is being sunset. And so those approval boards will review all the curriculum available to us for that subject matter. And we must make sure that it meets state standards. And then the curriculum and the board's approval packet is given to the school board. And the school board really needs to review that curriculum, um, and their findings from the approval boards before they approve curriculum for the district.
Thank you. Jason Gillum.
Uh, much of the curriculum is uh, is constrained by laws. There, there's some stuff that gets put out that has to be taught. Uh, I think that consideration needs to be taken into what the future holds. There are studies out there that review where uh, shortages in different uh, professions lie or are expected to lie in the near future. And curriculum should be maybe uh, tailored to help still steer people towards some of those uh, shortfalls. Uh, some, some professions are being phased out, just as technology and as things progress. And, and if our curriculum is stale and still training people to go to some profession, that's not gonna be in existence when they grow up. We're bringing in the service to our students. Um, I don't think that we're in any danger of that. Our curriculum reviews, I think, are, are doing well. If our graduation rates, our, our move, our rates of students moving on to futures in colleges and stuff is pretty high. And so I think we're doing a good job, and I think we're looking to continue.
Thank you. Breezy Mitchell.
Um, yeah, I think our curriculum specialists, they're the experts in their fields and we need to rely on them to propose the new curriculum and changes. I feel like my job as a board member would be to ask questions, request more information, and then express concerns or, or support the changes. Um, I feel like we could also take the standardized testing um, progress. I know it's kind of a snapshot of how the students are doing, but with that being said, we're able to take those numbers and assess the learning and growth and to see if our curriculum is um, doing its job.
Thank you. Kristen Hay.
Yeah, so again, I don't wanna sound like a broken record, so um, I'm just gonna echo that I agree with everything that Megan said. Um, she's right on point there. Um, I think some of the other things that we could do too is, um, you know, if our teachers have any suggestions, you know, they're in the classrooms, right? And so if they're seeing that maybe a curriculum isn't functioning the way that we expected it to be, would be for them to be that voice and to express that to us. Um, another way would be to look at those test scores. Maybe there's a neighboring school and their test scores are like out of the park compared to ours, right? Would be to communicate with them and say, hey, what curriculum are you guys using? How long have you been using it? Um, what support mechanisms did you use for your teacher so that it was successful? Um, so I think some of those open communications there at all levels and um, across neighboring districts, I think would be very helpful.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson.
Yeah, the hot one, uh, what Megan said, I think, you know, our, our specialists are, are key to it. And as a school board director, we get enough time to ask questions, to uh, study the curriculum, to look at it and see and give feedback uh, to it. Our teachers and uh, that, that have it, they have time to go through and look at what may work, uh, what may not work as far as implemented. But then it's also what's happening nationally, what's changing in science nationally, what's changing in math nationally that we can bring to the district to make better. And then looking at uh, school districts that may uh, be succeeding in certain uh, curriculums that we have not thought about or even adopting. And that, that comes with thinking outside the box. So I think that we're in a good space as far as our curriculum now, cause we have done some very, we brought in some very uh, uh, innovative stuff, especially in science, that I helped to approve and, and love uh, going forward. And it's just making sure that we stay ahead on what's happening nationally with the data.
Thank you. Next question. How do you plan to engage with and involve parents, students, teachers, and community in the decision-making process of the school board? Megan, you're first on this one.
So one of the ways that we can engage with parents and community members um, is through our district ambassadors program. We are starting our second year um, and accepting applications. And so that gives us an opportunity to engage in a variety, wi- with a variety of people from across our district geographically, um, and bring them in and show them what our budget looks like, um, what our transportation department looks like. And it gives us a really nice, authentic way over the course of an entire school year to engage at a very deep level um, with these groups. And then um, I, I engage with a lot of parents and teachers and staff members um, through my regular visits to the schools in my district. Um, I try and get into our schools at least once a week, um, and engage with all of them there.
Thank you. Jason Gillum.
Well, so I'm already engaging students and, and teachers and staff and parents. Uh, just in the fact that my name got out there and people that recognize me have come talk to me and say, hey, I saw your name on the school board thing. Here's an issue I'm having or whatnot. So engagement's kinda coming to me to some extent. Uh, obviously outreach programs, I see more transparency and our school board and our school is very transparent. If you go looking for information, it's available, it's there. But for people that aren't going to look for it, they, a lot of them feel like we're not getting that information out. So I think we need to be a little more proactive on that. I'm not entirely sure the best way, whether it's through direct mail, whether it's through email list to to parents and teachers, or that's notes to send home to students, or maybe even articles in the newspaper periodically. I think we need to get the word out a little better so that the community feels that they are more engaged and that we are being more transparent with things.
Thank you. Breezy Mitchell.
Um, I believe that the school district community really just needs to be strengthened. Um, there needs to be more effective communication to involve the parents. Um, I'd love to see more opportunities to have two-way communication that's more casual between the board and the community. I feel like getting into the schools and talking to the students, giving them a voice, um, talking to the teachers, getting feedback. And the other staff is the way that we're all going to come together and strengthen that community. You know, I came, my kids before went to the Brumerton School District, and I think that they do a really good job um, with engaging the community in the Brumerton School District. And I miss that in CK, but I feel like we can bring it back. Cause I feel like if we all, we all want the same thing for our kids, right? We just want good opportunities for them and safe schools. And I think we could all come together and be stronger.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson. I'm sorry, Kristen Hay. Kristen Hay is next. Not gonna do that with you.
Um, so I know that one of the things that we've done, um, that we've done for a while now is we have a, a student rep that comes to our school board meetings. And they go around to the different high schools and whatnot, and they get information directly from the students, and then they're the student voice. Um, so that is definitely one avenue that the students have. Um, as far as parents and community members, I know, um, you know, I've had a lot of them reach out to me and want to meet with me. And I, I've met with them, you know, in the evenings or on the weekend or whatever works for them and for my schedule. Um, for them to be able to communicate with me, tell me what they have going on. Um, you know, we're always available by email, um, can't always check that every day. Um, and another thing that I know that, that we've kinda talked about is having some open forums where there's a couple board directors together. Um, so it's not part of the Open Public Meeting Act, and then parents and community members can come in, ask us questions. Um, and, and give us some of that feedback.
Thank you. Drayton Jackson.
Yeah, uh, like Megan said, our parenting both ambassadors program, uh, uh, our ambassadors program was amazing. It, it really gave insight on how the school district works. Uh, we're going into our second cohort and gonna push forward with that. Uh, and then it's different committees. I mean, I got on the finance board in two thousand eighteen, you know, as just a, a concerned parent. The committees are open to us to get on, uh, we have to be engaged. You know, it's just a uh concerned parent. The committees are open to us to get on. Uh, we have to be engaged uh with it. And then I've had my share of Walmart conversations and Costco conversations where, you know, I get stopped and get asked a question and and happy to engage. And I think that on the email side, we have done a great job. As my leadership as president, I made sure that we had one person communicate. Because it was just hard for us as board. We're getting so many emails. So now we have somebody on the board that communicates back with the community to get their questions answered quickly. And we did that purposefully to make sure. But is there a lot more that we can do? We can. And there's a lot of things that I think uh parents just don't understand they have the ability to do. Uh, superintendent's office is always open. The board members are always seen out in the public. So I think that we just have to make sure that meet everybody where they're at with however they want uh information given to them.
Thank you. Jim Gross.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, it sounds like we uh this ambassador program is is uh uh it sounds pretty solid. Um, I I I think it's, it it comes down to, you know, listening and and uh and respecting uh that engagement from from the parents. Um, at the school board meetings, um Megan, I appreciate you're getting out once a week into the schools. That I think that's a great thing. Um, as I retire here in a couple of weeks, I'm gonna have uh 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 some some time to be able to get out and do do those things, get that engagement, go to those PTA functions and those assemblies and those things. And and just engage with uh with the community, uh the parents, students, teachers, and uh and be able to to take that back uh to the board as we make direct decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last question. Kitsap County expects to grow by around seventy thousand new residents in the next ten years, and Silverdale is expected to be an area targeted for growth. How will you accommodate that growth in the schools? Jason Gillum is first.
Our our schools are are recently built. We recently built new high school, middle school. I believe they were built with some expansion in mind. Obviously, expansion's gonna be difficult. Uh, one advantage that we have is uh we statistically, we've shown that uh younger generations having less and less kids, so hopefully the growth doesn't affect our schools as much, but we'd stop here ready for it either way. Um, the growth in the schools is something we will have to accommodate. We'll follow. If the classroom sizes are getting too large, we'll have to look at hiring more teachers and or finding more classroom space. Uh, we still need to be able to maintain uh the ability to educate our students. Keep the, keep the uh envi- learning environment uh computer for their learning. Um, we'll have to adjust as time goes and and then planning stuff for the future of the school of the district, we'll have to look towards uh what the population trends are actually showing and plan accordingly.
Thank you. Breezy Mitchell.
Um, I think this is a really important question because the growth in Silverdale is booming. And I'm not sure that we're ready for the infrastructure um for the growth. Um, so I feel like we need to look forward in the school district. We need to think about, are we gonna need more elementary schools? Are we going to need to expand our schools? I think one of the most important things we can do right now is retain our teachers. Our teacher, there's going to be a teacher shortage. Um, and we need to retain the talent and the education that we have so we can keep on serving our students.
Thank you. Kristin Hay.
So I think one of the advantages that we actually have um for this is that we live in a military community. And so our population fluctuates every time a boat comes in, every time a boat goes out. And a lot of the times, the families stay through the school year. And, you know, we could see a an a mass exodus in the in the springtime, and maybe the students don't quite come back in until the wintertime. Um, but we're kind of used to that. And so I think really it's 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 seeing that coming, knowing that it's coming, and being able to be flexible. Um, so for sure, we need to make sure that we're retaining our teachers and our um classified staff so that we can support our students. Um, and then really being out on the lookout for recruitment. I know that that's a huge thing that we're we're dealing with right now already, and so just being prepared for that. And knowing what that growth, um hopefully, we can um see what that growth is gonna actually be so that we can be prepared when it does happen, because it for sure will happen.
Thank you. Dretin Jackson.
When I first got uh to the school board in two thousand nineteen, I was showing a five to ten-year capital budgets plan. Uh, that plan showed growth. We was already predicting that back in two thousand nineteen of where we were gonna be. As you see now, Fairview Middle School is being built. Uh, that comes from projecting out forward of how things are gonna change. Uh, if you see Ole and you see uh CK was built in that model and and CK Middle School was built in that model. And then what we also started doing was stop allowing our neighbors to come into our school districts. And we had to slow that down because there it was overwhelming of how many people were out of district that was in our school district because of the great education that they were getting uh there. And I think another part of this too is working with our community, because if our teachers cannot afford to live here, it's gonna be a strain on them to stay here. And I think we have to start looking at affordable housing and how can a school district can wrap our arms with our uh county and say, we gotta work this together because we wanna have great teachers that uh stay in our district and live in our district, but they have to be able to afford to stay here.
Thank you. And Megan, you have the last word on this one.
So many of our schools have some capacity for growth within their current buildings. Um, so as the county grows and Silverdale specifically, we will just need to gauge where that growth is occurring. And it will likely result in moving school boundaries. Um, so our elementary schools will have different boundaries and our middle schools. We also need to ensure that we are retaining staff and recruiting new staff to reflect the diversity of our district. Now, we, if if growth uh gets high enough, we will need to build new buildings. Um, and so currently, Central Kitsap is using the Heavy Impact Aid to help build schools without the need for a bond, which is how we built Fairview. Um, and we need to look at the county's impact fees. When a builder comes in and builds a home, they need to find, pay towards building those new schools through their impact fees.
Thank you. All right. Um, at this point.
I didn't get a chance.
Oh, I am so sorry. Mr. Gross, please answer this question.
Thank you.
Voice tonight.
Okay, so so I mean, uh, uh, a lot of what folks have already said. I'll I'll tell you though, um, you know, we we passed a massive, massive bond, I wanna say about a decade ago. Um, we, you know, we uh, I'll say rebuilt Olympic High School. We built a brand-new Central Kitsap. Um, uh, we invested uh in in a number of our elementary schools, uh, 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 every school throughout the district. Uh, and we're still paying on that bond. Uh, but but we did it for the right thing, because we're because we're Central Kitsap. And our voters came in and said, we believe in you and and we we need the the right environment for the students. So so I think in that, that uh the voters were wise, uh, the district, we we made the right choice, uh, where to spend that that money, how to spend that money. And we've got that capacity there. Now, again, we've got a plan for the future uh uh continuous as we're doing this. And uh, and I I would say, I think the biggest risk there is that retaining teachers, recruiting teachers, and making sure that we keep our our classroom staffing size, uh, you know, student-teacher ratio uh at an acceptable level.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. At this point, we're gonna move into our, your closing statements. And you have one and a half minutes each for this uh part of the forum. So the first person will be Breezy Mitchell.
Okay. Um, I'd like to thank everyone watching this forum. Um, time is a non-renewable resource, so I really thank you for your time. Um, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. Education is so important. I've seen it change people's lives. Um, the children of CK have the right to equality, free, and appropriate public education. I was born in South Korea and I lived in Kitsap County most of my life. I was primarily raised by a single mom. And at times, times were tough. And so sometimes I was on the free lunch program at school. So I have deep empathy for students who face marginalization in school and for kids who have reduced circumstances. As a registered nurse and a business owner, I've had experiences that will serve me well to be a member of the school board. I know how to interpret data, think critically, and formulate action plans. I've been exposed to extensive budgetary and financial work and believe in fiscal responsibility with a high return on investment. Um, I'd like to end with a quote that recently impacted me. I was at the Boys and Girls Club auction and Congressman Kilmer said, "The youth are one-third percent of the population and one-hundred percent of the future." Um, if elected, I'll be dedicated to the success of the students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Kristin Hay, please.
Um, so I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight. Definitely appreciate the time to be able to come in front of our community so they can hear what we um have to say on a lot of very important issues. Um, I have two young kids. I have a ten-year-old and an eleven-year-old, and I know how much I love them and that I want the best for them. And I know that the parents in our community want the same thing. Um, guardians, if they're, you know, an aunt or an uncle or a grandparent taking care of their um their family members, it's it's important. Our our kids are important to us. And um if I am voted in, I will fight for those kids. I'll fight for them to have the best education that we can possibly provide for them. I will fight for them to have the the arts program, the music programs, the sports activities, because those are important for the children as a whole. It's not just about going to school and learning math and reading, which is hugely important. But it's it's about fulfilling all of the needs of the child when it comes to their academics. Um, I know that there um are some needs in improving communication and transparency, and those are on the top of my to-do list for the community members specifically. And um I just hope that if I get elected, that over these next four years, and I'm able to make some improvements in all of those areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Dretin Jackson.
Thanks. Thanks to the League uh League of Women Voters. This is amazing. Once again, uh, happy to be on a platform. I'm gonna read uh uh something from twenty twenty-one Washington State Healthiest uh Youth Survey. Eighteen percent of eighth graders, ten percent of tenth graders, and seven-point-seven percent of twelfth graders in Kitsap County were bullied, harassed, intimidated because someone thought that they were gay, lesbian, or bisexual, even if they were not. My goal is to create a safe environment for our students, for our teachers, for our administration. My main goal is to make sure that we get funding for special education and for students that have certain learning disabilities to make sure that the disciplinary part is taken care by support in the school district. Also want to make sure that we are creating an atmosphere that our teachers feel that they belong and they have a voice to make sure that our teachers understand that this is not just my district or anything, it's their district as well. And every decision I make, because I have students, uh, I have children in the district, affects me personally. I hear it from my children. So the things that have to move forward has to be for the students and the future of what the students have. This is not my future as mu- as I saw it, because we definitely would have been ahead, but it is my children's future. And I hear from students all the time that we know what we want, and we just ask you guys to help us, guide us to get there. And that's what I want to do. Electdretinjackson.com for support. And thank you so much for the, giving us the platform to discuss today.
Thank you. Jim Gross.
Again, thank you for hosting and and thanks to all the folks that that tuned in. Appreciate it. Um, I have a strong desire to see our community succeed, and it starts with our youth. I listen, I'm thoughtful in my words and my actions. I have decades of experience in leadership roles. I'm empathetic. I like to research an issue and take in all sides as I make decisions. Through my lifelong journey in Central Kitsap and my thirty-six years of PSNS, I have a strong community base. I want to continue to build on the successes of Central Kitsap Schools and limit the distractions to student learning. My goal is to see the students succeed, and I'll do my best to see this achieved. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Heim.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for organizing this event. And thank you to the members of our community for taking the time to learn about your school board candidates. I hope that I have made it clear tonight that I am fully engaged and committed to supporting our students by supporting our wonderful public schools. My priorities are guided by our district strategic plan, which was created with extensive community input. Above all else, we must consider what is best for our students and always put our students first. I put students first by volunteering in the classroom of some of our youngest learners, thus helping to build an educational foundation which they can build upon in middle school, high school, and beyond. I put students first by ensuring our schools are safe and welcoming. Our students should feel that they belong and are valued. I support a variety of career and academic pathways to success, which allows our students to achieve their full potential and graduate college or career-ready. Our district enjoys significant community engagement, and I look forward to that continued engagement. I demonstrate my dedication to public schools by volunteering, by serving on the board, and by keeping my kids in the public schools. I have three elementary-age kids in our district. I want the best possible education for them and all of our community students. I walk the line between celebrating our district's strengths and pushing our district leaders to do better. I ask for the opportunity to continue serving our school community. Please vote by November seventh. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jason Gillum.
I'd like to first echo the thank you to the Kitsap League of Women Voters for putting this on. It was excellent way to get the word out. Um, um, I advocate for a safe, accepting learning environment for our children. I plan to, you know, listening to teachers, students, and parents for the directions they see that the tools need to go and the shortfalls that they perceive are there. Like, uh, advocate for transparency. Uh, parents, teachers, community needs to know what we're doing as a school board. And if they feel like that they're not getting that information, we need to either help them find it or get it to them. I bring twenty years of experience of leading in the Navy and fifteen years post-Navy working for the government of leadership, dealing with people, dealing with conflicts, leading groups of people, helping people find common ground to get the job done and get folks back where it needs to be. I intend to keep school board and school board meetings focused on our children. I tend to keep everything going with children in mind and students' needs come first. I appreciate your vote and thank you for having this forum.
Thank you. Uh, once again, I would like to thank all of our candidates for taking the time to join us this evening. A well-informed electorate is critical to our democracy, and we hope that this forum will help you make your decision when you fill out your ballot. The general election is November seventh. Ballots should be mailed by October twentieth and need to be returned to a ballot box or postmarked by November seventh. Information on candidates and issues can be accessed at votefouroneone.org or in your voter pamphlet, which you should have received in the mail. The pamphlet can also be accessed online at kitsapgov dot com slash auditor. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I would like to encourage everyone to vote. And thank you. And thank you again, candidates, for for taking the time to run and serve your community. We appreciate all of your efforts.